Thank y'all for allowing us to recess for a few minutes. Before we get into the budget conversation, I'd love to get an update from our EMA Director, Susan Harris. Susan, I hope it's good news. At least it gives us an update.
This is the 5 o'clock update this morning. We will have another one at 11:30 today, and as soon as we get through that, I'll send the slides out. But this is the track so far, and you can see it's still the system, and they're expecting a hurricane, that's what the H is here, to Wednesday afternoon. And then this is what...
Mm-mm.
This is what we need to watch out for there. The M is a major hurricane, which is anywhere from 3 on up. So they're expecting it to increase rapidly. And the track is not very far from east of us, so we just really need to be prepared and have everything ready. The engineer's office has already been working. Get prepared, but that is the track for that. This is the tropical force winds, which is the 39 up to 73 miles per hour. When you get to 74, that's the hurricane winds. 13% chance in our area. This is another wind showing the timeline. Thursday, 8:00 AM, that's the cone on which we may see the winds, the tropical storm winds. We're not going to the big, so we're not going to worry about that. And then we are in the area for four, around four inches of rain. Could be up to five.
Can you say in the prime, kind of the expected impact in our area is early Thursday morning or Friday? Thursday morning?
Thursday.
Okay.
Right here. It will be right here at Friday morning, 2:00 AM, so you're getting in between there. The system right now, this was at 5 o'clock this morning, so at 11:30, we'll get the next update. Y'all got any questions?
Mrs. Lynn's landfall though is around Thursday night over there?
Yeah. Well, yes, Thursday night into the morning.
So that means Thursday night would be a busy night for Lynn's office, for your office. I'm sure you'll staff the, unless it changes completely or dies down.
That's right.
If the winds or anything like projected, then you'll be staffing the operations center.
Is there, is there a high-pressure system in the Gulf right now that's kind of coming over to push that over a little bit?
Oh, yes, yes. And that's where they're, they're trying to guess on that system itself how far it's going to push it east. And that's, that's a big deal if it can come over west onto us, so it's just right now just a wait and watching game. But we do need to be prepared because it is so close.
I know with the idea of having a man at the operations center, Lynn, you wanted to propose something.
I do. In, in the event of an emergency situation, I believe it has to be that way.
Right.
I'd like to be able to give a portion of my contingency funding to EMA and Engineers' Department for food or whatever the necessities are at that time. If that doesn't happen, and we hope that it doesn't, then I'm assuming that it comes back into...
You'd keep your money, wouldn't you?
And I'll get to keep my money, yeah. But otherwise, we're going to give it to them.
I think it's a great idea, and I would sort of like to join you with mine if I had it.
If you had some, what I'd like, I guess this may not be the right question, but I always ask those anyway. I'm wondering how much?
I want all that you've got.
I don't know what normally is the staffing requirements. Do you have?
Well, all right, let me just give you an example. And for those that don't know, what she's talking about is before, if we have a disaster here in Covington County, and we have to activate, and we go into that, that phase of response, and we know that we're going to have enough to declare disaster, or we need help, that's when y'all do the, what's that, resolution, and it's called a resolution, that we're, we're in a need, or we're in the disaster mode. And that's what we send to the governor, and the governor does the disaster relief resolution there also. And then that's when it goes to the federal. So during that phase is when they're working 24/7, we are 24/7, and that's when I try to provide food so that they can keep moving and keep working for the county. And that is where you're talking about that money to be used in that situation.
Yes, absolutely.
So, I mean, I don't know how much that's going to be.
$2,500 would be, I mean, way more than covered. I don't think you'll spend near that much.
Okay, well, let's, I've got another one I have to give some to. So how about we appropriate or give away or hand over, whatever we want to call this? How about we do $2,000?
That would be great.
Okay. And let me add to this, that every time something comes around, we'll say to Susan, some of us, can we do anything for you? And every single time she says, no, we got it. So this time, I'm going to get to do something for you.
Thank you so much.
Along with that also, I need to give $500 to the Florilla football team that's making a trip, that they need assistance in that. So I'm, I've used all my money. I've made a motion now that I need to give $2,000 to EMA and the engineering department for the emergency situation if it arises, and $500 to Florilla High School.
So y'all have heard the request, and the motion is your second?
Yes, it's my second.
I heard three seconds, so I assume we don't have to vote. It's 4 to nothing in favor of that if there's no opposition, so. All right, and that, we, we have a small contingent, discretionary fund that each commission, commissioner has, and we try to expend that on things that arise unexpectedly through the year.
And we thought we could spend it.
That we think are appropriate and approve, approvable under law and stuff, and so that's, but we do bring them all here for action. So you just heard, Lynn, expend her $2,500, assuming that there's a need for the $2,000. What you got?
I need to expend mine also.
Well, you want us to come up with a plan, or you have?
No, I have a plan.
Okay, what you got?
And, yeah, like Mrs. Lynn said, we thought we had already spent it. We happened back up on it. Anyway, I'd like to give $2,000 to the real level school athletic department, and $500 to the strong bass fishing team.
Okay, both of those are school, directly to the schools. There's a motion, is there a second?
There's a second.
Any questions on that, comments? All in favor, say aye. I oppose, same saying, all right, that's, yeah, thank you.
Any questions about that before I sit down?
We appreciate the update.
I'm sorry, Susan.
No, you can.
And we, we will look forward to a further update at 11:30. Hope the news is better, not worse.
Y'all can attend the conference call in our AOC if you like, or if not, I'll send the slides as soon as I get them.
Thank you so much. I encourage you to watch your emails, because she will continue to keep us posted as, when there are going to be updates coming out of the national weather, so. All right, let's move into budget consideration as our final item business for today. All of you commissioners have received a line item budget proposal from Ms. Karen, and just generally, here is what we're looking at. The, the total revenue budget, adjusting it for transfers in that are not coming from outside, they're coming from within the other departments of the county, the net revenue budget is $25,333,000, round figures. The proposed expenditure budget is slightly less than that, not much, but it's just a little bit less than that, so there's all, so revenue does exceed expenditures. Just I'd like to highlight three or four things in here. We're proposing a 3% cost of living raise for employees. I think that that's in line, is in line with discussion that I hear on social security cost of living. Other entities that I'm aware have adopted budgets recently, that's kind of in line with where they are, so I think it's an appropriate amount. It's absorbing, you remember when, when COVID money first hit, ARPA funds, we gave a $1 per hour premium pay out of those funds. This budget is absorbing those into our general operation, moving it away from ARPA funding, which is nearing the end of its life cycle, and absorbing it into our current budget. So, so it's not, that dollar's not going to be an increase to an employee. They already have that. They've been getting it now for three years or whatever, but it just makes it permanent. They don't have to worry about that money going away. This proposal also absorbs 4.75% health insurance premium cost. The county, the commission is absorbing that as into the budget, so employees will not see an increase or change in their health insurance premiums. That's correct?
Yes.
Okay, want to make sure I didn't mistake. There's some employee recognition items built into this, so if we have a Christmas luncheon for employees, then that's covered by this with certain things that, in an effort to be in compliance with the law. There's a safety incentive and recognition program. And in addition to the cost of living raise, there is a, not a large amount, but a small amount for every department head to work with for merit increases within their department. There is a contingency or reserve fund, a line item of about $231,000. And, you know, that's just under 1% of our budget, so I think that's an appropriate amount, and we've tried to keep that in place over the years, and that's served us well because there are always things that you don't expect to come up. So with that being said, I'd love to entertain a motion to adopt the budget and move forward. You may have other thoughts, what, any questions or things that you want to raise, or things you'd like to point out. There's some good things in the budget I think that you might want to make note of.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve of.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second? While we're waiting for a second, let me tell you how much I appreciate the work that Karen puts in. This is a great deal of work. She and her staff have put in pretty significant work over a two or three week period, a little longer probably, but it's been almost the primary focus for two or three weeks. And I think they've done a great job of presenting this, so. I wish I could make a second, I would do that, but we do have a motion, is there a second?
I do have some questions before we go into it.
Want to, you want to raise those before we get a second on the budget?
I'd like to.
All right, go for it. What you got?
Okay, and yes, I stayed with Karen yesterday until about 6 o'clock, bless her heart, and looked at some things. I did have some questions. She answered most of them, but I do want to bring them up before this commission. You know how I feel, of course, about economic development. We have valued here at a total of $45,000. I feel like that's way over what we should be doing. I'd like to go backwards to where we were giving them a portion of that as we saw new jobs and all being created. That's been several years ago, that that was, that that's the way we used it. You know, I, I just, I think that gives some incentive to bring those, those jobs to this county, and I'd just like to see that happen again. That's the first thing. If we put the money, a portion of it, to them upfront, and we left the rest of it in our, I guess as the commission's money as such, then it would still be there to be appropriated as needed, rather than just to say, well, we're not giving it to them. If down the road a project comes up, then that money would be available, rather than handing it all over, well, the 30,000 and then the 15's left there anyway.
Yeah, so I was going to just mention, make note that the, the proposal in the budget is that 30,000 be appropriated to CCEDC, who is the economic development arm of our county, and, and that, that would be paid out as a single amount. The 15,000 that you mentioned is in a line item, really as a contingency in the event that there's a, a project that pops up.
And I'd like to see that reversed if possible, that we put 30,000 in contingency, and the 15 goes directly to them now.
And what else in particular?
Well, let me move on down. Also, we have an increase to the Alabama High School Rodeo Association from $6,000 to $7,000. I'm all in favor of the high school rodeo. However, if I understood this right, yesterday, they only come now here one time.
They had, in the past, they had two rodeos that would come, a Bama Challenge and then the finals. About three years, they only came for the finals. Last year, they picked up and brought Bama Challenge back. This year, they're coming three times.
Okay.
But we have had multiple years that was only one time.
One time. And if I understand it right, also, you know, the funding is used to go to another event place to rent the other facility. It's not used, you know, if it were used for scholarships, if it were used for any of that nature, I'd, I'd feel better. But anyway, my opinion is let's stay at $6,000. That's not a lot of money, but every little bit helps with this budget. Little Bridges Rodeo has been, they didn't request, but we felt obligated, I believe, that, that we would give them $6,000 there again. You know, they come, I believe you told me, three times a year. My opinion is let's give them $3,000. That's $1,000 in an event. That would cover the rent on the building. And does it, Little Bridges, they don't charge, do they?
They do not charge a mention.
That's a pretty much free family event, so I think, I don't think we can give them the rent free, but can't we, if we give them this money, that's going to cover their...
The same is true with high school and junior rodeo. None of them charge for events, so local community can certainly go out and participate.
Right, and I think that's outstanding.
They can be spectators. There are, there are fees for those that participate as contestants.
I think some groups try to charge. I don't know how successful they are at it.
Anyway, that's just two of my suggestions. And down at the bottom, our new request, I was not sure what these are, and I'd just like to know. Covington County Program of Leadership, I'm not sure what that is.
We're going, I propose that we remove that 5,000 off of that.
Okay.
Because they're inactive at this time.
Okay.
Program of Leadership was spearheaded by the Op Chamber of Commerce, but it was countywide, and they would typically have, they, there were, I think, maybe three years, three classes, where they would elect in typically younger folks, not necessarily younger, some is 15, in their 50s, but they would go through a year-long process of being exposed to all things in Covington County. Tommy participated in that actually about three years ago, and I don't know if anybody else in this room has, but it's open to others, except that they, they have become inactive because of a change in leadership at the Op Chamber, so we'll, I would suggest, I would suggest you leave that, but only pay it if they reactivate that, so.
Okay.
The youth leadership?
The youth leadership.
That's similar, and it started about the same time. The first meeting that, that was held, was held on the day that all of the United States shut down, actually. That was the, because of COVID, so that's about how long it's been in existence. But they make up a class from every, of juniors from every school in the county, typically about 34, 35, 36 kids, and they go through a program of leadership, and that's exactly what it says, they are exposed to, they take strengths tests, they are exposed to government leaders, small business, local business, industry, economic development, municipal government. EMA has presented to them often, so they become aware of what's going on in our community. It makes them better, stronger leaders, and the students in the schools. It's a great program, I strongly support. And it's fairly minimal cost, but it does impact every part of our county because kids come from every school in our county and participate. That's what it is.
All right.
It's led by Dr. Terry Dunn, who is with the two-year system in Alabama, but she does that as a volunteer basis, and there is a team of probably 10 other folks across the county that help day in and day out with that program.
Okay. And my last one, I believe on the front sheet, was the Battleship Memorial Park. That's a $100 request, I guess.
It was a request received, so it was included here?
It's on the list.
Yes, we've received requests in the past as well, and we have never actually made an appropriation to that group, but they did submit a request.
So on here, it's showing under the request, but not under the budget, so it's not proposed in the budget.
That's in the requested amounts.
When was the request made?
They've sent us a...
Recently?
Yes.
They do it every year. They send a request every year.
Sent it every year. I guess they do that in every county and...
In hopes of getting a Monday.
I hope so, gathering, okay, interesting. So let me, let me, let's look at the budget. Is this recap sheet still up to date? So there's a, there's a requested amount, but the actual proposed budget, for instance, on high school rodeo is $6,000, or it's been checked?
It's been updated.
Okay. So that's seven as proposed.
If it has a, if it has a number, account number by it, it's in the budget. The ones that do not have an account number are not in the budget.
Okay. So the $100 is not in the budget?
It was not in there.
Okay. All right. What else, Ms. Lynn?
Oh, I'm looking through all my notes. I got lots of them. I was...
You want others to speak up?
Yes, please. While I'm looking, yes, please.
Anybody else have any questions? All right, hearing none, we'll move back to you. What you got? Just joking.
Oh, y'all all, y'all all sit there. I talked to all of you, I know. We do have some issues, I see, and, you know, I always hate to be the one that brings them up, but normally I am. We have some, a lot of miscellaneous items in departments.
Which ones?
Several, but, you know, I just don't, maybe I just, I'm one of these people who needs to know what we're spending money for, rather than miscellaneous. And I know that most of the department heads know, you know, I'm sure they have an idea of where it's going. But in particular, there's one, and I'm not going to say which one, because there's no point in it. But when you get over $100,000 in miscellaneous, you know, I just kind of like to know where that's going. And could, I guess my question is this, rather than do it that way, could monies as, such as that be placed in there again, in a discretionary or a contingency, whatever a name for that is, in a fund, a portion of it, so that it could be asked for and used as is necessary versus just putting it in the budget, and here's your money, you know, and then...
Merry Christmas.
Yeah, Merry Christmas.
Well, you know that the, I mean, the budget is based on history, what we have historically seen, the department heads are working the control funds.
And I understand.
The, the reason, in my opinion, the reason for that, those miscellaneous accounts is for random things that come up a single time. Maybe you expend money a single time on a particular type of item. Well, you don't want 40 additional line items or 80 additional line items if it's a random rare event. It seems to me much more efficient to catch it in a single line, and that's the miscellaneous.
Right.
The purchase order is, is issued based on the request, based on the budget, and that's where the control enters. So I think that being able to see it, you're going to see it after the fact, most likely, we would, as commissioners, but it's fully accounted for. So if you have $68,248 in the miscellaneous expense at the end of the year, we can look at every line item. And I think that's when you raise the questions to the department head about why did we spend this amount on these items?
And I do understand what you're saying, I do.
I don't think we can control it in the budget like that.
Ms. Lynn, in my department, something I can think of just raw, just randomly, that might help you understand this, is I buy flags. I buy, they're expensive. They wear out fast. That is something that I buy, it's always documented as miscellaneous because it's not prepared to a building. It's not anything I have for a line item, but I do spend a lot of money on those every year. And I say a lot, they're, they're pretty expensive. They don't last like they used to. You know, I used to get, put flags up twice a year, maybe three times, depending on weather. Now it's four or five, because they just don't make them up easy. Batteries is another thing I buy a lot of, just under miscellaneous. So it's not that we have just money to spend on whatever we want, it's just because we don't have a line item that would reflect the purchase, ideally, well, not a line item. And instead of, like I said, instead of having 40 more line items, and having one for batteries, and having one for flags, and having one for, that's the only reason that it's there. And I think that is typical for every department.
It is, and most departments, I think, do a great job. Matter of fact, I think all of them do. That's not the point. The point is, is sometimes when you're spending this amount of money, then I just think that sometimes, not every time, but sometimes, we need to withhold some for later dates. Okay?
And that's, and I think that's...
And that's all I'm, it's not, the money's not going away. It's going to be there, and it's going to be used for that department if they, if it's necessary.
I'd say, my thought is it becomes real cumbersome to come back and ask the commission for, for that next order of flags, because I don't, I've run out of my...
And, and I wouldn't expect that. I wouldn't expect that.
Well, but that's kind of what we're proposing, that you, that you put it in somewhere else, a contingency, instead of miscellaneous, and get approval to spend it. And I, I just, I don't know where you draw the line. I hear, I hear your concern. I think it's valid. I'm not sure how to manage that, I guess is what I would say. But again, our system is set up so that there is a check and a balance. If, if there's a line item that's out of line that we, that we fit the wall on, then there has to be conversation with your administrator, who you're, who you're charged with overseeing those things, and moving, making, reallocating funds from a line item to another line item. So, again, it's valid, but, but I think our system is set to manage that for you now pretty well.
The only thing that I could reckon, I could hear what Ms. Lynn is saying, is it's cut them back some and leave the money in general fund, and then when they get through that to a certain point, then reappropriate the money back to a miscellaneous to them?
Yeah, we have, and like miscellaneous line not to exceed a certain amount, which I'd be satisfied with.
I think that would probably be the answer.
What amount would I like to...
I do. And I'm not going to be the one that assess what that number needs to be, but I do. Or exceed in a certain department. We know some departments require more. That's an obvious fact.
So just a question, the commission, for instance, the commission has $10,000 budgeted there. That budget is based on history and what we've historically experienced. So if you cut it, then I suspect that in March you're going to have to, let's say you couldn't have, then in March you're probably going to have to come back and reallocate from somewhere, from a contingent, from a miscellaneous contingency or whatever, to get it back in there to finish the year. We didn't, I think if you're going to go into that, we probably should have given them the upfront opportunity to rethink all of those miscellaneous items and try to find a hole to stick them in.
I, I see that, but I also know that we might not have to...
You may not. I get it. We can, so, you don't want to propose an amount, but you want to give us a thought?
I don't have a thought. I think that's something that we need to sit down as a group and discuss possibly, or maybe with a department head possibly, or, because I want everybody to be satisfied and happy with the whole situation.
So you've heard the input. Let's just see if anybody else has concerns that you want to raise relative to the budget generally, and then we'll come back to you, I'm not leaving it. Just, just see what else is up. Any other thoughts after your review of the budget line item?
And I understand this budget is a worksheet. It can be a...
It's a tool.
A tool, a work tool, there you go. But it can be amended at any given time.
Correct.
In the, in the, the next year.
You can tighten or expand it.
Yeah, you can contract, expand, or whatever, because it is a tool to go off of. I see where Lynn's coming from, I do. I see where Kevin's coming from, I do, and it's a catch 22. You know, my thoughts is, yeah, there's some changes, like, like you mentioned about the high school rodeo only getting a certain amount, or like Greg said, taking out that. But this is a tool we're going to work with. Yeah, we can make these changes, adopt the budget, but then we can amend the budget as we go along throughout the, the year. Say, okay, well, with the miscellaneous, you can amend it then, later on down the road, one way or the other.
Right.
So that, that's where I look at it from a standpoint that this is not set in stone, this is what we're going to spend. This is a tool that we go off of, like you said, over historical period of time.
That's pretty much every budget's been like this. You know, you, you get, you try to balance it, you try to get before you know you got your money.
Right.
And then, like I said, if, if there more money needs to be put somewhere, then we can take away another spot, we can always move it around, but we know we got this money that's available. So we got this to work from, we got this, so instead of having, you know, everybody got, you know, a minimum amount, we know we got a number that's safe that we can use, you know. We got some room. We not spent all of our money, but we, we were close. We very close, you know, we had to go back and reshape a lot of this stuff. So I'm, you know, I just see that it's something that we got to, you know, we got a, we got an idea of where we at, and then we can always go back and tweak it, if they say. That's the way I look at it.
That's the way I look at it. Now, you know, some of the things, you know, you was talking about some of the cuts, you know, if you want to change, do something on the economic development, you know, we can do something on that. You want to, you know, some of the others, I don't see a lot of difference in what we're going to do and what we do not need to do. So let me, let me just tell you, in looking, looking through the budget, there are some of the miscellaneous requests particularly are smaller, there's $500 in that probate, I think it is, and probably 500 and 1,500 maybe in elections, and revenue commissioner is $11,660. So when you get down to it, probably the largest uncertainty is in the sheriff and law enforcement, between the sheriffs and the jail. You want to address any of the, you have, you have some larger numbers in miscellaneous law enforcement expenditures? Anything you want to address in that, in particular there, or just...
I mean, I, I don't have my, my, my sheet fund or anything, when we were going, when we were going through and figuring out our budget, and there are stuff, there is stuff there that was, that would follow the miscellaneous law enforcement, and the miscellaneous funds were wicked, and it's, it's very convenient that we use them when needed, as, as, as the commission makes it go, y'all have the commission make it twice a month, and sometimes we can't wait twice until then.
Are there, are there any particular expenditures that you anticipate this year that, that are above the ordinary or in law enforcement?
I do, I do, but we are going to work with our jail management system, try to update that, so it will, so it will be the same as our record management system, which kicks off today.
Yeah.
That, that is something that we're working on.
Any other questions or comments? I know, I know we, the proposed budget is cutting some from what your requests were, so we're, we're going to be working with you anyway on that as far as, you know, moving forward. If there are particular items that are not appropriated in that original line item, then we'll have to come back together and hash that out, so, and I think that was by design. Any other comments, questions?
What would you, what would you want to see done? How would you like to see it done, like we said?
The change is made. I think that that's something, what Greg just talked about, that we need to be able to talk with these, our department heads. I think it's something that should have been done prior to now. I'm hoping in the next administration, we'll be able to have workshops where we can sit down together and discuss the things that need to be discussed prior to open meetings and then, which would be an open meeting anyway, but I think that would solve a lot of our issues.
All right.
But we're not there now, so we'll move forward.
Just to be clear, we did have a workshop on the budget about four or five weeks ago, and so we've had those four or five weeks to discuss it.
But we didn't have this copy.
We didn't come back, didn't have what?
Didn't have this copy, didn't have the final copy.
Didn't have a final copy, that's true, but you had, you had the departments ask, so... And we, again, we tried to tweak those, make them manageable and workable within, within what our revenue allows and so forth, so... Anyway, any other comments, questions, thoughts?
On your miscellaneous thing, and just, what if you say, okay, this is what they at right now, if you halve until six months in the year? Would that satisfy you to...
Would I feel more confident? I would. I would. And that's not every department, that's, you know, I think that's there again, I think we have to go back and look at the budget numbers.
So what, so what, what you're proposing...
And then they can come back and...
Because, you know, like I said, we can amend it any time during the year.
The batteries, things like that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't have...
About not exceed 20,000.
And then, like I said, we can amend the budget any given time, it's a tool that we work off of, and then...
I'm going to leave that to you, you're the administrator.
Well, there are things, like Kevin was talking about, so you do have some items, but not to exceed 20,000.
Yeah, small, or I, I know we don't consider them small items, I do, those are necessary. Necessary items, look, I don't even know if that's included in there.
Any miscellaneous not to exceed 20,000?
So, so the, the recommendation is any miscellaneous line item, whether it's miscellaneous law enforcement or miscellaneous in a department, is approved up to $20,000, no more than $20,000, and then it'll be considered at a future date. Those funds will be pulled over into a separate contingency account or some account, into contingency, and you can reappropriate those as you move forward. So you want to make that as a motion?
Sure.
Is there a second? Second, second, second?
I'll second it.
All right. Let, let's do this correctly. Actually, we have a budget in front of us. I think that we need to move, get a motion second on the budget, and then we can move to amend or change that with... So Tommy made a motion to move forward to approve the budget. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, so we have a motion second. Now we have a motion to amend the budget.
To all these changes?
On the miscellaneous items that we just talked about. So we put a limit on that, and it'll be brought back for consideration as the year proceeds. And we, do we have a second on that?
Are you going to put all these changes in that you mentioned, or...
We didn't, we didn't discuss them.
There's going to be certain things that, you know, I mean, we're going to hit back on this again, like economic development, that's, that's just the money that you're going to award them, give them. Well, do you, if you want to change that before the time, what time of the year we...
We pay them out, appropriations are paid out in January.
Well, anytime that you have, you know, before we go, might go through that and say, all right, this month, we got, we're going to pay out this amount, and, you know, just like a spreadsheet, everybody gets. And then if you look at and you see something you've kind of been questioning about at the next meeting before it's paid, say, here, I'm, I'm not in favor of this, or maybe we need to change something. You know, that way you'll know ahead of time whenever it's going to be paid out, where it's going to go. You know, would that be a lot of trouble or not? I mean, I don't see where it would be, because you don't pay these things at all times, you know, the rodeos come at different times, everything comes at different times.
We pay it out to the, we're going to pay it out to the rec board, but in January, so it would be...
See, a three months consider, October and November.
You know, you can look and see, you know, how, what's going to be coming, but before this time, we may want to change this, or do this, or do something. That's why, you know, you'd have an idea before that is paid, if you want to change it or leave it as, as is.
So we have a motion to amend the proposed budget on the miscellaneous items, that's what I've heard so far, so, and, and with a limit, capping that for the, on any of those various line items in this budget, with that money being set aside in contingencies. Is there a second to that motion to amend the budget?
You have a second on that one?
Who is it?
Miscellaneous.
Oh, okay, I didn't hear, I didn't hear the second. All right, so we have a motion second, no other questions? We'll vote on the motion to amend, and that's on the miscellaneous line items. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same say.
Aye.
Was that a, a, to oppose the amendment, all right?
Nay.
You voted just like I called for, so that's fine, I just wanted to make sure I had it clear. So then we've amended the proposed budget on the miscellaneous items, those line items. And then, so we have the budget before us, there's a motion second on that. Any other conversation or discussion on it? Anybody want to get out of here at 10:35? If so, let's try. So we have a motion second. If there's nothing else, all in favor, say aye.
Again.
Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
On the whole budget?
No.
Just on the minute?
We're doing the whole...
No, we're doing the whole budget.
The whole budget.
Yeah, and we didn't re-vote on, we already had a vote. This is on the budget, you were aye, weren't you? So it's unanimous vote to adopt the budget as amended. All right.
You want to oppose again?
No, sir. I'm good, I got... Any other comments? Any update yet on the weather? I know it's not 11:30, but I thought if it were drastically changing, they may send an early one. Anyone else? All right. If all minds are clear, Kevin can get to the turnoff button, we're going to amend, adjourn the meeting.
We're going to amend the meeting.
Yes, absolutely.